Okay, calling me in order. Thank you all for being here tonight. We had a long pre-meeting, so I apologize for the delay. If you would please stop by your kids. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this group who conducts the business of the county. We thank you for our employees. We thank you for our citizens who volunteer to do other things. And we ask that you please bless all of our citizens and all of our employees. Oh God, we are so grateful that we have the freedom that we have today to speak our minds, to cast our votes, and to stand up what we think is right. We ask that you bless our servicemen and women, both here and abroad, and keep them out of harm's way. We ask that you be with this council as we deliberate the business of the county and help us to make decisions that are in the long-term best for the county. We ask these things in person. Now I'd like to call on Susan Durham, the current president of the Business Women's Association, to lead us in pledge. Susan Durham?
Good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have in your packets five minutes for the September the 4th meeting and also for the work session that preceded that meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm going to give a break.
Motion for approval? Is there a second? Any discussion?
There's only one on the press and I've already given to Nancy, and that's with regard to safety on the vote. And had you voted twice?
Yeah, I voted twice. You caught that, huh? Yeah, I've got canceled myself out. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please say so by raising your hand. Motion carries. Appearance of citizens?
No, sir.
Next, old business. First item in the old business is the second reading of the hotel motel ordinance, which will increase the tax from three percent to five percent and will authorize sending the taxes not only remitted to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources for the promotion of FD Roosevelt State Park, to the Harris County Chamber of Commerce for the promotion of the park. The new rate will be effective January 1, 2019, and businesses are required to remit the hotel motel tax to the county will be notified in October of the new rate. This is the second reading. Are there any citizens that wish to make any comments regarding this? All right, if none, is there a motion?
I'll make that in the corner of my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second. Any discussion? All those in in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Next item is request for inmate work detail to Talbot County, which we tabled at the last meeting. And Warden was going to contact Talbot County and talk to them about that. And Warden Nelson, if you would, please let us know what you heard.
I met with Ms. Eisen, the county manager over there, also with the public works head. Don't ask me what his name is. But we did meet last Wednesday, and they are requesting the inmate detail consistent with five inmates. Basically, the work Monday through Thursday is the agreement that we came with. We did talk about a fee, and we did talk about a possible $10 per day per inmate, which would be $50 per day for the use of the inmate work detail. They've already purchased a van, and they're going to equip the van in order to transport the inmate. And they've already worked some of the equipment for the detail.
Okay. I think this was everything that they were to buy the van. We were to supply the inmates. We would supply the guard, but they pay us for that.
That's correct.
And all the tools, equipment supplies, vehicle and the fuel was paid by them.
That's correct.
And we had, I guess, tried at one point in time, talked about $20 per day per inmate. And they said that that was just too much for them. They could not handle it. Warden Nelson used her negotiation skills and apparently had a great meeting, and she got them down to $10 per day. So they would be willing to probably pay, which helps offset some of our expenses, clothes and things like that.
And the detail will not start prior to January 1?
January. So I think, I guess they've taken a vote on that yet, but I think they have pretty well told Warden Nelson that they think that would be a good deal to take in steps. Is someone who'd like to make a motion on that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion and we go ahead and agree with the top of county to provide inmate work detail as agreeable.
Is there a second?
Is that $10 per day?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion, second discussion.
Yes, my concern is are they willing to accept full liability? For example, inmate is injured, there's lawsuit, everything that we-
The state that covered would be, you know, as far as the work and the agreement, any medical expenses are already covered under our correct health.
But I'm thinking, for example, let's say inmate suffers some illness, they think he's not really that sick, and he ends up, and he has to party technically. If the county gets sued, are they willing to stand behind him if that circumstance happened? I just don't want the county to incur any possible liability or expenses.
That comes with any work detail. We already got two contract details, so they're aware because they have had a detail prior to us talking about this detail with DOT, so they know the liability on these are.
And it would be on them?
It just depends on the circumstance. You can't say yay or nay, it just depends on the circumstance.
The form contract that we've always used, at least I have always used, includes an identification agreement.
Okay.
Where they agree to identify the county, not in your example, heartache, or they cut themselves with a swing blade or whatever.
Right. And we did talk about training and notification when the inmate is injured, we do have to do the documentation, just in case later on down the line, if he wants to say, hey, I heard a new detail, but if we have the documentation, because it's checked by medical, we're covered.
That's my concern.
That, all of that was discussed last week.
Okay, thank you.
So the attorney can go back to parent agreement, put all the particulars in an agreement, and have the board approve at the next meeting?
Yes.
Well, I was going to, did the county manager say they were okay with $10, or should they take it back?
Yes. She was going to have to present their agreement on October 1st. Okay, dear. So, yes. So if we can, they want to vote on the final terms of their agreement on October 1st, basically.
They'll meet on the 2nd. So why don't we move 16th for us? It's not going to start until January 1st anyway.
That's fine. There's what now?
It won't start until January 1st anyway. 16th we can do the agreement.
Okay. Tell them we got a duly agreement.
Yeah, because they only leave once a month.
Yeah.
This is approving, this is approving it, just nothing quite formal.
Yes, just like-
The doctor, actually, see the approval, yeah. This is approving.
All right. Okay. So I guess we at least vote on the motion with the head with that document.
Right, yes. These terms, yes.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, please say so by raising your hand. All right, any other old business?
Good job, thank you.
All right, thank you, Cynthia. Appreciate it very, very much.
No problem.
And how are the cameras working?
Oh, pretty.
All right, good. It's that time of year again, and it's my pleasure to be able to do this on behalf of Harris County. We have an outstanding group of young ladies out here representing the American Business Women's Association. If you ladies would please come and welcome. This is just some of their members. They've got quite a strong group here and make Harris County proud. Read the proclamation. Whereas, the American Business Women's Association was founded in 1949. It is a national association of working women that has a strong tradition of promoting the advancement of women. Whereas, business, economic, and social analyses indicate that the current trends of women entering the workforce and attaining increasingly responsible positions will continue to contribute to the betterment of businesses and communities. And whereas, the mission of the American Business Women's Association is to bring together businesswomen of diverse occupations and to provide opportunities for them to help themselves and others grow personally and professionally through leadership, education, networking, support, and national recognition. And whereas, American Business Women's Association Day was initiated in 1982 as a national day on which Americans can recognize the achievements of the millions of employed women in the United States. And whereas, joint congressional resolutions were passed in 1983 and 1986, designating September the 22nd as National American Business Women's Day. Now therefore, the Harris County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Saturday, September the 22nd, 2018, as American Business Women's Day in Harris County. So proclaim this 18th day of September, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Some of it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please sit by raising your hand. Motion carries. And we do congratulate the ladies very, very, okay? All in favor, please sit by raising your hands.
Thank you, sir.
I have a sister over there watching us. Motion carries. Ladies, thank you all very, very much. We certainly appreciate it. We'll get a little picture out here with all the commissioners. And then we can get the final proclamation that will be presented to you. Well, we can try that, yeah, all right. Yeah. You get to in front of me.
I can press that thing. This way. This way.
Okay. Can you see parties? Because I'm tall. I'm not sure.
Okay. He's not going to wave his arms. One more.
Perfect.
We enjoy it more.
All right, thank you all very, very much. You represented us well, and we appreciate it. We need to thank you. All right. worth of financial reports. We got the month of June, which was the ending of the fiscal year, and also the month of July, which was the first month. We all had an opportunity to review those. Is there a motion?
I'm going to do a review.
Motion for approval? Is there a second? Second. Any questions, comments? You get off the hot seat then. We don't get to grill you today.
I wouldn't really do that. I mean, you know, the revenues came in almost 100%. Remember it now?
Our department needs to do a good job.
They did a great job.
They did an excellent job.
You know, the expenditure side, the number's big, but when you have to think about the covering for E911 and some other funds that don't cover themselves, bus depreciation, some non-tax items, that number starts to shrink down. I think we still have a sizable surplus, don't you?
Good year.
I'll be there for questions in a family.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please sit by raising your hand. All right, now I want to call on Colin Martin, the president, the executive director. What is your exact title?
President, CEO.
President, CEO of the Harris County Chamber. And Greg Greenough, who is chairman of the Harris County Development Authority, who want to present an economic development action plan to us on behalf of the government authority in the chamber.
My name is Craig Greenhall. I live at 187 Caldwell Court in Fort Sum, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, the commissioners, I want to thank you for having us here this evening to present an economic development plan of action for Harris County. This plan is the result of several months of work, many meetings, of a dedicated group of bottom tierers. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Andrews, and County Manager Dalling, thanks to both and all of you for your participation in this process. At the April meeting of the Harris County Development Authority, the members charged the Harris County Chamber of Commerce with leading an effort to craft an economic development strategy to submit to the Board of Commissioners. On May the 1st, a group of 30 leaders from business, industry, nonprofit, and government and the community center to begin that process. It was a really great turnout, a really great start to this process. After its initial meeting, the work group divided into three different types of committees. We have new industry, existing industry, and workforce development. These committees met through the summer and worked together to formulate a plan of action for the development authority to recommend to the Board of Commissioners. After consulting with subject matter experts, having robust conversations at each meeting, and the respective committees approved these action items for submission to you. And at last week's Development Authority meeting, we approved the plan of action unanimously. At the beginning, we set out to create an overall economic development strategy for Harris County. However, as we worked through this process, we realized that we were actually outlining an actionable items that would lead to an overall strategy later. This is the first step in a longer process, which we would hope will continue to move forward. We appreciate the chamber's efforts in leading this process, and we're indebted to our economic development strategy work group, all of whom are listed in the report you received tonight. Without their effort, we could not have finished on time as promised. We hope the Board of Commissioners will adopt this plan of action, begin its implementation. Colin Martin, our Chamber of Commerce president, will now go through the points of plan, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank Mr. Chairman, Commissioners for allowing us to cut it out. I'll thank Chairman Greenhall for introducing this. We did work very hard, very diligently, beginning in May on through last week. I do want to point out that in our original plan, we said we'd bring this to you in October, so it's really gratifying to go bring it to you in September. As Mr. Greenhall mentioned, we broke down into three groups, new industry, existing industry, workforce development. We're going to go through each action item this evening. The longest one is the first one. And we really, after consideration, we started calling it new industry, but the truth is it's business, industry, retail, and commercial recruitment. And this first paragraph is just the preamble to the action items. In order to diversify our local economy, create employment opportunities for our citizens, and enhance the quality of life for our residents, we will pursue an economic development strategy in conjunction with our regional partners to recruit new businesses, industry, retail, and commercial development to Harris County. We will keep the sustainability of our natural resources at the forefront as we seek economic growth for our county. The individual items are, using general funds from the county budget, we will pursue Georgia Ready for Accelerated Development, also called GRAD certification, from the Georgia Department of Economic Development for Site A in the Northwest Harris Business Park. If you look at a map, I believe there was one in your packet, it is the northernmost site in the business park. Second item is using a portion of revenue from the future SLOS, we will invest in Northwest Harris Business Park to make it more attractive for new industries, relocate existing industries to expand in Harris County. If I can take a moment here to talk about that. At one of our meetings, we had Scott Harris, who did much of the, he's with Harrison Gray Engineering in West Point, did a lot of the engineering work for the business park originally. He brought forth a plan that really had been looked at before. I believe, Mr. Chairman, correct me, I think it was like $5 or $6 billion, but that was to grave the site, put in roads, put in sewer, water, electricity. I mean, it was pad ready, ready to go for somebody coming to develop. The GRAD certification was really only about, I believe, $60,000. And the first step is getting a Phase 1 environmental was, I believe, $3,000. So getting this GRAD certification is relatively inexpensive, but what that will do is it will move us up the priority list for the Georgia Department of Economic Development, start showing that property. If we can go ahead and get that full plan that Mr. Gray outlined to us, it'd be even better, but I mean, that would take probably more money than certainly is allocated at this point. But that's where the growth of the county is in terms of industrial development, that's where it'll be, and it makes sense to apply there. I'll tell you one more story and I'll move on. I was talking to a resident of Harris County, lives in a very nice subdivision here, and we talked about this, she said, I'm against all industrial development, I want any more industry here. I said, well, you know, if we built out the Northwest Harrison Industrial Park completely, filled every single site, you would never know it, because those trucks would come out of there to turn right, go to the interstate, go north or south, to the land or Birmingham or Montgomery, or of course, south. And she said, well, then I don't care, go ahead and do it. So I think it's a matter of education when people hear economic development and think we're going to put a smelting plant next to their neighborhood, or we're going to put apartments next to their neighborhood. We really are talking about a specific area, the Northwest Harris Business Park, this commission or a previous commission had designated for industrial development. So we're not talking about any new land being dedicated, just bringing new industry to that park. Moving on, because infrastructure is critical to development, we will suit public private partnerships with other local governments, economic health organizations, utilities, private industry to deliver utilities such as sewer, water, broadband to areas with greatest potential for growth. Obviously, we're talking here specifically about where the West Point brings water and sewer to the business park, but it could be other places as well. Because sales tax remains an important source of revenue, the county government, municipalities, and the Board of Education will support near-term efforts to grow and improve new retail establishments in Harris County. We're practical, we will encourage development of existing infrastructure and brownfield sites to preserve the county's natural environment. So again, you know, as I go about the county, talking to folks, there's two things I hear is folks want broadband and they want grocery store. Bringing more retail to Harris County is typically, you will not have to do any, or very little anyway, incentives to get those folks to come. They make their decision based on density. However, day one they open, they're going to produce sales tax, and they're probably going to pay property tax for day one. So it's a win-win for the county, for our residents, for the taxpayers. Next point, because Northwest Harris Business Park is an ideal location for regional partnerships who have continued to work on an agreement with cities and counties in the region to define the organizational structure, roles, accountability, market profit to the Georgia Department of Economic Development, site selection consultants, utility economic development teams, and others involved in economic development. And what we're specifically talking about there is having conversation, probably with the city of West Point, they have an economic development person on staff working out some kind of agreements to market it, but it could be with some other folks as well. We will establish a public-private partnership to fund activities such as branding, retail recruitment feasibility studies, and other economic and community development services that will strengthen the economic and community development efforts of Harris County. I'll tell you one quick story. Sumter County, Americas, Georgia, which struggles a lot more than we do, I think they're a little bigger, but their economics are much lower level than ours. They set up something called One Sumter, it's a 501(c)(3), and from their county raised, I think it was $3 or $4 million that went into funding a branding effort and some other type of things. We don't have such a structure here in Harris County. It would be great to have such a structure. For instance, at our last meeting of the new industry committee, we heard from a retail site consultant, Andy Kemp, Nexite, who brought us a proposal for a retail development recruitment process that would cost $54,000 over three years. It would be great to have a nonprofit organization that would raise money from local corporations, local donors, that could fund that, wouldn't necessarily have to come out of city or county coffers. The same thing, we need to do a branding effort, and this is my opinion, I will say as the chamber president, we need to do a branding effort, have one single brand that covers the county for tourism, economic development, and the chamber. We know what we are, I think internally, but we haven't expressed that to the world yet. So going through that effort, but again, this public-private partnership, likely a 501(c)(3) would give us the ability to do that. Next point, realize that tourism is the backbone of our economy, we will invest in assets that attract more visitors to our area and provide county residents more amenities. And earlier night at the comp plan meeting, we talked a bit about that with the rails and trails that being the probably the primary one in our county, but there could be some others that come up. Tourism is, I mean, we count on that a lot in this county, it generates an awful lot of hotel motel tax, other sales tax from county, employs a number of folks, so the more we invest in that, the better. Working with our tourism partners in around our county will define a much-needed, unified brand for our county for Harris County's destination travel. That ties back into the previous. Those are all of the business industry, retail, commercial recruitment points. Are there any questions I can answer on those? Next, we're going to the Business Retention and Expansion Program for existing industries, for existing industry in the county, representing both the Harris County Board of Commissioners and the Harris County Development Authority. The Harris County Chamber of Commerce will lead the Business Retention and Expansion Program, it's also called the BREPP Program, by conducting in-person and electronic surveys of businesses and industries currently operating in Harris County. Membership of the chamber is now required to participate in BREPP. Essentially, many counties do this already, frankly, I don't know many counties do it exceptionally well, but either there's a dedicated person in the economic development staff, or the chamber goes out and interviews businesses and say, what are your needs? Are you having a problem getting employees? I will tell you that probably every business in Harris County right now would tell us they're having a problem attracting talent. Are you having problems with ordinance as regulations, local government? Are you finding difficulty lending money? All kinds of questions like that, that would then help us paint a picture, be able to go to the Development Authority and come to the Commissioners and say, here's some changes we need to make in order to make us attractive to business. Part of that, too, would be, again, going back to the employment issues, making sure they're talking to Goodwill and Southern Rivers, or talking to the Georgia Department of Economic Development, or, excuse me, the Georgia Department of Labor, and knowing what resources those organizations bring to businesses. So what we would do is enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Development Authority, the chamber would enter into a memorandum of understanding saying, we'll do this on behalf of the Development Authority- on behalf of the Development Authority and Commissioners." So in the next points, in the first six months of BREP, the Chamber will conduct fifty surveys, will conduct fifty surveys annually thereafter. The Chamber will report the results of the survey to the Harris County Development Authority quarterly. The Development Authority will make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding any changes in ordinances, policies, or incentives needed to ensure Harris County builds a business-friendly environment. The Chamber will work with the Regional Project Manager of the Georgia Department of Economic Development to connect existing businesses and industries' resources. The program is available for the state of Georgia, whereas they may be eligible to invest in jobs in Capitol Clinton. I will tell you one success story we had with that. Anna Hirk is the Regional Project Manager, she called me and said, "Hey, I want to come tour our business in Harris County." It happened that that day she called me, I happened to go on Front Porch Gang where Ken Callaway's a member, so I called Ken and I said, "Hey, can I bring somebody from the state of Georgia to come tour Callaway Blue?" He said, "Bring her on next week." She and I went, we were pulling up, and Ken was adding on to his structure, and she said, "We need to talk to him about that." Went in, found out, he was not only adding on to his building, he was buying more equipment. She identified for him tax credits that Callaway Blue qualified for. He said, "Go talk to my cousin Edward, who does the books." As a result, Callaway Blue got tax credits, actually will get tax credits, they'll get them next year, I guess, for that expansion. Had we not done that, he would have never, he was going ahead and doing expansion, but we would have never been able to connect with that. So that's the kind of value that that project manager brings, and it's a real value to our county. So we'll take ownership of BREP, but as I said, we'll need to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Development Authority to do that. Finally, was there any questions about the Business Retention and Expansion Program? Okay. Under workforce development, to develop and retain homegrown talent, we will support the efforts of the Harris County School District to establish a college and career academy by 2022. And that day came straight from Superintendent Mr. Couch, they were going through a facilities review, and they think they have a better understanding of what they need by 2022. We're excited with the College and Career Academy, not only because of getting our high school students trained, operating their work, but we think we'll be able to train some of these young folks for businesses or industries that we want to attract to Harris County by saying, "Hey, we have a ready-made workforce for you to come to." When you talk to businesses about economic development, land's plenty available, buildings are plenty available, it's the workforce they want, they want to go where there's workforce. And the old rule of economic development is, the higher the incentives that the county has to offer, the worse condition the county's in. So having, building a workforce available will help us in that regard. We're also talking as part of this with Thinketh Academy and Regrange about how we can share resources. We will work with Columbus State University, Columbus Technical College, and other regional education institutions to bring programs to Harris County residents in need of training to upgrade current skills and learn new skills to be competitive in the job market. Again, that's coming from the school district, school board member, Mr. Marlowe, here earlier, that's his idea, he wants to have the College and Career Academy open at night, and if somebody can't get Columbus Tech to learn a skill, they can come there, the equipment will be there, they can learn that skill there. We will support the Business Retention and Expansion Program of the Harris County Chamber of Commerce to connect existing employers in Harris County to regional employment resources such as the Georgia Department of Labor, Columbus State University, Columbus Technical College, and Goodwill Engineering of the Southern Rivers. So that concludes all the points of the economic development work, plan, action plan. On behalf of the Development Authority, we're asking the Commission to adopt this. As you can see, there's no timeline, there's no budget, Chamber's not coming asking for any money from the Commission. We did talk to the Development Authority under the BREP program, and we don't anticipate this year, but there is software, we record the results in, costs about twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars a year, we may come to you at some point and ask for some cost sharing in that regard, but we're not asking for that at the time, no commitment on that in the future. But by adopting this plan, this action plan, I think it's the first step, and the most important thing is to show the state and economic development professionals around the country that we are open for business. So we have to answer the questions you may have about this.
You press. Asking for a step, important for a step to there, and I appreciate the leadership calling the Development Authority.
I know it was well thought out, and a lot of discussion went into this, and I think it certainly shows that we went ahead in the right direction.
Please, we have such good leadership, and we've got things a lot.
Is there a motion that we adopt this executive economic development action plan?
I would like to make that, that we adopt the economic development action plan as discussed.
Motion, and we have a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your hand. Motion carries.
I'm very glad, I thank y'all.
And this, I would like to make the comment, this is very timely, because the economy is rebounding, and we have actually, within the last two, three weeks, received three inquiries about businesses that are looking to possibly relocate, or certainly get another place to. This certainly is very helpful when that happens.
And it would definitely complement some plan development.
Yes.
And I think that would be, and I'd be happy to forward this to Rick, and say, "Here's what the county commission adopted, and have them entered the comp plan as being the economic development section, if that's okay with you."
That's my.
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you. Any other old business? All right, move into, sorry, new business. Then we move into the county managers portion. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chairman, Work Commissioners, the first one is a bid award for the Water Main Project on St. Route 219. Just to go over the highlights of it, again, this was a bid, the county didn't receive three bids on the deadline date. You can see them, the low bid was one million, five hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents, all the way to the high bid of a little over two billion dollars. Car Shleet, the county's engineers, consulting engineers, have reviewed the project and evaluated all the bids, and they are recommending that a low bid receives this project for the one point five four million. This project is in the budget, if it are approved, contained in the budget, and properly funded. When all the costs are considered, and the county share, the DOT share, the county's is right on budget. We budgeted one point one million, and it came in like a one point oh eight million. So it's right on budget, the project should begin in about a month or so, and be finished within three or four months after that. The project should be finished by well before the end of this fiscal year. Mr. Culpeper, Waterhead Director, is here to answer any further details.
I have a question. Was any consideration given to Gordy since they were within ninety-nine percent, and they're a local company?
That would have been my vote, but we didn't have any valid reason to disqualify the low bidder. Mr. Gordy is, it was within one percent, he is a taxpayer of the county, he did, just completed a big job, a sewer job, of course, but we did not have any valid reason. And I mean, I don't think we have anything in place for like the local preference within quarter to percent like Columbia has.
We've discussed this at least three times. Do we need to make a resolution?
To do what?
To consider local businesses that are county-owned businesses that are within a three percent?
That's a very common purchasing issue, is a partial, local preference, or is there a local preference policy whereby if the, if the non-low bidder lived in the county or had business interest in the county, or a business in the county, then the board would have the leeway to give the low, to give that non-low bidder the project if it was within X percent of the low bid. Well, we don't have that, so we don't have that flexibility. And since we cannot, since the low bid has no other, you know, they meet all bid specs, then we're going to, I'm recommending that we go with a low bid, and maybe look at that bidder's preference policy for local bids, you know, in the future.
Nancy, didn't we do that about six years ago?
I want to say we did, but I don't know if it was a formal resolution, the ordinance is just a general policy.
Yeah, I know we did, we did look at it, discussed it.
And I can't remember the percentage.
Decided not to.
I don't think we voted on that.
Not to, it may not have. I don't, I don't, I'll certainly search the records to find out that.
Does FBS, an ordinance, or can it be policy, a resolution?
Well, it depends on the structure, whether your policies are incorporated to your ordinances or not. Typically, it's done by an ordinance.
We certainly couldn't do it at this town because that was not a place that the town bids were advertised. But certainly a good point, and we can take a look at it again. All right, is there a motion?
I'm with the motion that we go with Crawford, Gray, and High Line, lowest bidder.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, project updates.
Mr. Chairman, Work Commissioners, to go quickly over these updates, the work program, or the goals to be accomplished during this fiscal year. Number one, the two pickup trucks are out of control, will be obtained tomorrow, and then the boxes a week or so out thereafter. So I would say by the middle of October, we'll have two fully-equipped, brand-new out-of-control vehicles that are exactly new. Number nineteen, the L-Big projects, the resourcing for this fiscal year, the bid opening is October the ninth, bid award on October the sixteenth, to pave those two roads, Lower Blue Springs and Barnes Mill Road. Number twenty, paving of Hollow Road for Drive is on hold.
And I hope to have some information on that, I would make some.
Number twenty-two, restriped various county roads, used as SLOST, fourteen dollars. The Public Works Director has prepared a list of thirty-three roads to be restripped, and we're preparing bid specs on that right now. Number twenty-six, Eldersley Park, the bid opening was on September thirty, no, August thirty, for the paving of that road of gravel. A preconstruction meeting was held on September the fourteenth, and they should be mobilized probably next week, and be finished by early November, for just the internal road and the playground. So the Eldersley Park project is moving. Number twenty-seven, Phase One of the Airport Fence Project, that complete, that, the construction is progressing very well, and that should be finished late this month. Number thirty-one, the airport road, airport access road paving, that bid opening was today, and there was three bids, and that should be on the next agenda on October second for board approval. Number thirty-four, tractor mower for the airport, that should be delivered in, before the end of this month. Number thirty-eight, we're preparing bid specs on replacement of vehicle scales for the Number forty was just approved, and that was the St. Route 219 Water Project. Number forty-two, the update of the coverage of the plan, again, that was meeting earlier today, and that is ongoing, and to be finished by the state deadline of next June. Number forty-four, the Melly Lakes Dam Project, that has been discussed over and over again at various commission meetings. Invitational letters were sent out to all the property owners, about six hundred and thirty of them, on last Friday, September the fourteenth, and there is a property owners' meeting in this room on October the first at 6:00 P.M., in order to obtain the property owners' concerns on this project. Number forty-six, increase the local tax from three to five percent, that was approved earlier today, effective January first. Number forty-eight, the Day Soul Stream Rig Rounding Project, that was awarded several weeks ago, and that project, the equipment is on the ground, and they are well on their way of having it finished by the end of this month. So far, we've had really good construction with them. So that's about the highlights of the fifty projects that the staff is currently working on.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions? All right, anything else?
That's it for me.
All right. Mr. Nero?
I think there are two items in my section, and the first was the agreement that complements the ordinance change with the Chamber of Commerce. That agreement is based substantially on the prior agreement that was in place, the substantive differences, whereas the old agreement had the split, this agreement has the proceeds going entirely to the Chamber of Commerce to be spent in accordance with state law pursuant to statute. The agreement is for a term of one year, and there is a sixty-day non-neual notice revision in there, so this could be a binding agreement for a year, and it could be revisited, obviously, at any time after that.
All right. No questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that this Hotel and Hotel Tax Agreement be.
Is your second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your hand. All right, next one, this is G-Dot.
This is a, again, an annual renewal of an agreement that apparently has been longstanding for many years with the county, is in a provision agreement. I will note, just so that I understand, that the one substantive difference between this agreement is that there is no indemnification agreement with the state, and good luck getting an indemnization agreement with the state, but if anyone knows that's not in there, other than that, it's all, it'll change the agreement.
All right, is there a motion?
I should do it for you.
Is your second.
Second.
Discussion?
This is thirty-nine five, cover of that. Total pause for that.
No good statement.
That's it, that's all the papers.
The actual amount that we have for the toll is forty-four thousand. The state won't change. The cost for us for the officer, the benefit is forty-four thousand, state only, I mean, it's thirty-nine five.
The forty-four is salary and benefit.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other question? All in favor, please, if I raise your hand. Anything else?
I think that is it on my section.
Is there any other business to come before this? Entertaining a motion for a German? Is your second.
Yes, second.